I'd like to add to the agenda an 8A for COVID to look into a policy for unvaccinated people. With that, can I entertain a motion? Does anybody else need to add anything to the agenda?
I'll move that we approve the agenda with the addition under 8A.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Bob's not in, right? So we don't have to do a roll call.
Correct. He's not here yet. So Megan, if Bob comes in, would you please let us know? We should be able to see him, but in case we can't see him.
Nope, no problem.
Thank you. Okay, approval of minutes of August 21st, 2021?
Well.
Or 12th, excuse me, 2021?
So moved.
Can I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Board of Health minutes for August 18th, 2021?
Move to approve.
Can I have a second? Second?
Getting paid? Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay. Thank you. Warrants? Accounts payable? Eight nineteen twenty-one for forty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty cents?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Are we doing them separate?
Yeah, nice one.
Okay.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Accounts payable? Eleven thousand eighty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents? Can I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. This is town to panel payroll? For eight twenty-seven and the amount of ten thousand two hundred and six dollars and twelve cents?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? This is accounts payable for eight twenty-seven for forty-seven thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-one cents?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Accounts payable? For eight twenty-six? Four thousand one ninety-nine thirty-five?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Alright, so I just want to make it open to public comment if they have a question about accounts payable? Or a comment, and also to remember that you can go on the website and look at everything. That's why I'm not announcing it anymore. Megan, does anybody have their hand up?
No one has their hand up.
Okay, thank you. Alright, moving on to correspondence. I just wanted to let everybody know that we got a little card? From Elizabeth Palmer. She says, "Dear Select Board, food for thought, when the new town office is built, is there going to be a dedication? My thought is that our longtime dedicated town clerk, Rachel Mason's name should be considered. Keep up the good work. It's not an easy job and you are all doing the best for our community. Thank you, Elizabeth Palmer." I think that's a very good idea, that we have a dedication, and maybe we can, I don't know, discuss it down the road or take, um...
I, I think that we should.
Some kind of dedication?
Absolutely, and I, I think there's...
Many people.
There's several names that really pop into my mind.
Maybe we could dedicate rooms or something?
You know what? That's a great idea. I like that idea, Angie, a lot.
Because there's quite a few people out there that we should dedicate, I think.
And I think that, that, um, will you keep us on track with that, Tim, when we get to that point? Keep, you know, keep us on task so that we don't...
Forget about it or overlook it.
You know, whatever. That'd be, I, I, I like the idea. I like the idea of rooms.
Yes.
Versus the one, one shot.
Right.
Yeah, I like that.
Alright. Thank you. And that's all I have for correspondence. We didn't have anything else, correct? Okay. Alright, window dressing program.
It is Michael Weber. He was there.
Yeah, he's...
Michael, are you there?
Uh, yes, I am here.
Good evening.
Alright, uh, wait a minute?
We're ready, we, yeah, we can hear you.
Can you see me?
Can't see you, but we can hear you.
Can't see me, but you can hear me?
Correct.
Correct.
Let me see here. Let me...
We, we did see you initially.
Can you hear?
There you are. We see you now.
Alright, hey, thank you for giving me time to talk about window dressers. Uh, this is a program that I think can save people a lot of money on winterization. Basically, window dressers is about putting, uh, window inserts into people's houses. And, uh, you know, I have here a sample. And what it is, it, it, it's a pine frame with polyurethane around it. And then a gasket to go around that. That totally, it's done inside and it totally helps people save money on their winterization. And, um, it's a good community program because window dressers keep their prices low through two things. Volunteers and a community build. Volunteers like me go into people's homes. We measure their homes. Uh, then we send our information off to a mill in Vermont. They cuts the frames. And then, uh, they send the frames back and we have a community build. Where persons who order the frames come to the site and build inserts. Um, for us in panel, the community build would be, uh, in Bennington, it'd be November 9th? No, in November 4th through the 9th. And it's where all the people who've ordered things come together. So what I'm asking is for you to help me get the word out to panel residents about this because, uh, the last date for this is October the 15th. Uh, and I'm hoping to give, uh, you know, uh, we're hoping to get flyers out and let people know about this tremendous program that, uh, has these inserts that is almost like an internal storm window for people and would definitely ca- cut down the cost of winterization and their, and their costs. So, uh, what I'm saying is, can I put something on your town website? And, uh, and after that, I'll be, I'll, I'll answer any questions you have.
Since it's a non-for-profit, I think we do allow that.
It's a non-for-profit.
Yep.
You know, but there is a cost involved to people who do, who do order window frames.
So now, do those frames just sit over their original windows?
Those frames fit inside the windows. You put them inside and what we do is we go measure and then it's almost like an in- internal storm window.
Oh, I see.
And it, it, you know, it, it has struts on it. It's about an inch and a half of pine wood. Uh, this year because of COVID, we had to only offer people pine windows. Uh, if they're over four feet, we put a strut in it. It has two layers of plastic and then, of course, there's foam, which enables them to install them and take them out. Install them in the fall and take them out in the fall. And, and you know, there is a cost to it, but let me say this. Uh, efficiency Vermont is offering a hundred dollar rebate if people order more than three inserts. And when I go into a person's house and talk with them, uh, if they can't afford that cost of what it'll be, we'll, we'll, we'll negotiate a price and the, and the inserts.
Oh, you can't give us like an average cost for one window?
Okay, I, I, I could say that if you ordered a small window, which I'm saying is maybe, uh, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-nine inches by forty inches, the cost is about thirty dollars, thirty-five dollars.
Okay, thank you.
I, I, I'll give you a personal example. I went into a house this week. Uh, then we measured seven, seven windows. They were approximately twenty-seven by forty-five. They were single pane. Uh, the total cost came to two hundred and seventy-eight dollars for seven window inserts. Uh, and, uh, this person could pay that total price, but if they couldn't, we would negotiate them on what they could pay and the number of inserts that we could put in. And then with energy efficient Vermont, they got seven windows for, for a hundred and, for one hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Nice.
Yeah. And I mean, this is a nonprofit organization. What we're interested in is getting inserts into windows to help people save money.
Good idea. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, what I would like is, what, what can I do to get on your website, the town website, to advertise this? Because we need to get this information out because after, uh, October 15th, you know, that's, that's our timeline uh, uh, for people to get, get the information so we can get the frames cut.
Right.
You have a website?
Yes, we do. It's windowrecord.org.
That's something you can add a link.
Yep, yep.
Rebecca, are you in the, um, you're in the room?
Yep, I'm here.
Um, as the board liaison, do you see any, um, problems putting it on the website?
Um, no, it's a not-for-profit and it's a community program. It's not like, it's not a for-profit business, so I have no issue. I don't, I wouldn't think there's an issue with that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca.
Providing a service, people can opt in or out, you know?
Let me see, this would be done in panel, Bennington, Arlington. I mean, this is all across Bennington County.
Yep.
Okay.
So yes, Tim said that he would put it up on our website, correct, Tim?
I'll reach out to you again, Michael, and we'll coordinate.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I don't think we need a motion.
No, I just think that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you for all your help.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you. Alright, PV1 upgrade? Did we want, did you want to just talk about that, Mike, or you? Okay.
I can certainly talk about that.
We sent you down there?
Yeah, I, yeah. I don't think, I don't think Darcy is in this, um, meeting, but, um, so about three weeks ago, Darcy sent an email to the board members um, about an upgrade on one of our pump stations, specifically the one um, down near Alta Gardens Trailer Park. So I reached out to Darcy, um, because of my lack of knowledge, ignorance, for lack of a better term, on what these pump stations looked like and did and whatever. So I met with her the very next day, her and her staff. Um, and we met down there and we went through that pump station. We went through why she wants to upgrade it. Um, and she, she's definitely on task. That pump station, in my estimation, is, is definitely needs an upgrade. Um, there, when, when something happens, they, the, the staff is 100% out in the elements. Um, no matter what the elements are. Um, there's, there's just no way for them to get in, um, undercover. That's, that's first and foremost.
But she said it was very dangerous.
It's, it, in my opinion, it's a pretty dangerous operation to get in there and change those pumps. It's 20 feet deep. It's a five or six foot square cement well, for, for lack of a better term at this point. Um, they're, they're down in there 20 feet deep. They're in electrical wires galore. There's, there's just, it's dangerous. It's, it's dangerous. Um, so in the same, in the same day, same visit, we went to the pump station by McMolding, which I think is PV3. I'm pretty sure it is. So, which is an above-ground pump station, and that's what she's proposing with the study probably is going to come back for the upgrade to PV1. I, I said this to Darcy in the sewer commission meeting earlier. I said it to the board, I'll say it right now. I would eat my lunch in PV3. They had no way to get in there to clean that up. That's just the way it is. Um, it's approximately four feet down in the ground. You get down some pretty nice metal stairs with handrails. The pumps are right there. Um, there's, there's, your, your equipment is totally undercover first. But when there is a problem, your staff is undercover to fix it. Whether it's raining, eighty, ninety, uh, twenty below zero, whatever, your staff is undercover. So in the sewer commission meeting, um, we approved for Darcy to start, um, an engineering survey, which is the same engineers that initially put the system in. Um, which was definitely, in my opinion, this, you don't have to research anything. They already know what the system is. It was also, I did some research. It's also my understanding that where PV1 is right now was not the initial chosen location. It was moved for whatever reason. And I don't think it's worth researching out why. It was just moved. Um, we've come up with a, you know, sort of a plan, um, to have that, i- if that's the, if that is what the approved engineered plan is, is to put a station in similar to PV3, then we will have a fence all the way around it, like, like that's down there now. But we have also taken into account that the residents of that area, when we were down there, there were several people that, um, went through there. There's a lot of foot traffic, a lot of bicycle traffic. There's a lot of traffic that goes from the residents of that area to the river or to wherever they're going, or people that live on Lincoln Street or down in that area, I believe, use the footpath through there. So that was one of the things that I was kind of adamant about, is that even though we fenced off the pump station, we continue to have a footpath available to the residents in that area to use to go to the market or where, wherever they're going. It's, you know, we have to take that into account, and Darcy was in total agreement with that. Um, you know, not, not to cut, not to cut anybody off. We don't want to fence the entire thing in. Part of the, part of the engineered plan would be to change the access point from not having to go into the trailer park, but to come in off. We have a deeded right away off Church Street. Um, so the whole program and process would be, um, there's just so many pros to it that, um, that's, that's why we're looking into it and why we started, why we approved the engineering fee. Um, we have checked into it. It can come out of our ARPA money. Tim is, Tim has looked into that. We've made sure of that. Um, so it's really, at this point, there's no cost to anybody. It's money that, that we're receiving from the federal government. Uh, but just, just kind of an upgrade here, an update, just so that we know, everybody knows what's going on. And if you want to open it up to public comment, that's up to you, but I'd be more than happy to answer questions because I was involved in looking at it.
That's next anyways, after COVID, so.
Well...
Want to open it now?
If you will, if you want to open just public comment on that particular thing.
We can open up public comment on just that right now. If anybody has a question, please raise your hand and remember to state your full name.
Jim?
Go ahead, please.
Jim?
Hi, Jim Kosis. Hey, I, I think that's a great idea, but I just want to find out. I'm up here on the mountain. It, I just want to make sure, is this a general fund expenditure or general fund grant reserve that's being used? Or is it something that's really the sewer commission that is handling all this separate from the bonds that we are pay, our bond amounts that we are paying? So, thank you very much.
Yep, Tim, Tim will answer that, Jim.
We're receiving funds from ARPA. And a component of ARPA is you can use it for wastewater projects. So it will be, we don't, the initial, what, what the, what they're pointing to do this evening is for the preliminary study to find out how much the cost will be. But at this point, the funds are coming from the ARPA money, so it has no impact on the general fund at all.
Okay.
Or the sewer commission.
Or the sewer commission, correct.
Okay, no, that sounds, that sounds great. I mean, the best we can do about clean water around here for everyone is, is, is very helpful. I just want to see this town built up with more and more people coming to the town to build a house and everything like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just to be clear, it's wastewater, not water.
Right, wastewater.
Wastewater. Because he said water. He said water.
We're keeping the sewer in the right place.
Exactly.
Keeping everything.
Absolutely. Okay. Are you all set on that, Mike?
Yep, I'm in, like, you know, the, I'm, I'm fine. Unless any, any of the board members have questions.
Is there anybody else?
I didn't know if Ronnie had any questions because we went over it at the sewer commission, but...
First of all, just second, Ronnie. Megan, was there anybody else at all in the public?
No, there's no one else.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, go ahead, Ronnie. Did you have a question, sir?
Or anything to add?
Not to dread, just, okay. Don't cost anything, it's free, but it doesn't benefit everyone. Just like the town hall, we could use some money there. That would benefit everyone.
Right.
But we can't get that, right?
Right.
Is that what you said?
Right. Right, we can't use the ARPA money for that.
That's what I mean, that's predetermined, or whatever. Whatever you want to call it.
Okay. Anybody else? Alright, wastewater treatment facility, ARPA funds, if you want, were we done with that? Or did you want to bring anything else up on that?
No, I think that's all this.
Take care. It's an engineering thing, yeah?
The, the preliminary studies are, like, I believe, ten thousand?
Ten thousand five.
Ten thousand five hundred dollars.
Yep, yeah, the preliminary study is ten thousand five hundred.
And that'll bring us back to the cost for whatever options they choose.
Okay. Alright, 8A, um, COVID. So, um, a couple people have come to the board and asked about COVID and the new regs and regulations and stuff for unvaccinated people. So I would like for us to move forward and to look into what we can and cannot do with requiring an unvaccinated person in the, um, town office and at meetings.
I would, I personally think to do that, so the municipality will take it. My opinion is to follow the state recommendation.
Exactly.
From, uh, Director Linn, um, with the Department of Health, who is following the CDC's recommendations.
Right, but we need to know what that is specifically.
Well, I think, I think we can I, and I think we should follow the recommendation, but I also think that we should be a little more proactive on that. Um, in my opinion, I think what I'd like to look into is, um, to protect our, our own employees as well as ourselves and people who come in and out of here. Is I'd like to look into the legality of placing on the doors of the town office, the two entry doors, a mask mandate if you are unvaccinated. If, if you are unvaccinated, I'd like to see a sign that says, "If, if we can." If we can.
Right.
And or symptoms.
I, I would like to say, that's right. I would like to say, if you have any symptoms or if you are unvaccinated, I, if you're on, if you have any symptoms, we don't want you in here anyways.
Right.
But if you are unvaccinated, I, I would like to see us have a mask mandate in the town office or unvaccinated people.
And that for CDC watch?
Basically.
Just curious.
But, and I, and I think if that's, I, I think if that's legal for us to do, I'd like to, I'd like to, if we have to make a motion, then I'd like to make that as a motion, and I, and I think we probably should. Um, I think it protects all of our employees um, for that unvaccinated person coming in here. I, I just think it's...
How do you know if they've been vaccinated or not?
Well, we can ask them.
And that, that's, you're right, Ronnie. It's...
That's a good question.
No, and you're absolutely right. It's, it's, it's a legitimate question, and you would hope that when someone sees the sign, that they would
abide by it.
Or go get a mask? Or not enter? I, I would hope that, but you're absolutely right. There's no way to police that. I, I think, I think policing that is probably as unconstitutional as it comes, but I don't know. I'm not a constitution expert either. Um, but I think if we have the sign there, we've at least attempted to...
Cover for our employees.
Well, eh, right. We protect our, protect our employees and our committee members and, and even the residents of the town, because you could have, you could have two or three people in here paying their taxes or paying their sewer bill at the same time. We're, we're protecting our residents as well as, as our employees and ourselves.
Right, but that wouldn't just be for the town hall. That would be for all our municipal sites.
That's right. It would be for all our municipal sites. That's right.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And that goes for all committees and meetings and, I mean, everybody still has the option to Zoom. Zoom is always going to be there from moving forward. We have this beautiful TV and this whole system that we received with grant money. We will always continue to use it. So, did you want to make the motion?
I'll, I'll move that if, if legal, that we mandate by poster, um, on the two, on the entrances to all of our municipal buildings in the town, um, that if a person is unvaccinated, that they wear a mask entering any town or panel municipal building. And if, to further that motion, if they have any symptoms, um, please do not enter.
Call me. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Alright, moving on to public comment, please remember to raise your hand. I'm sorry.
Nope, nope, that's fine. I get a couple of public comments before we do that.
Please raise your hand and state your full name.
So before we open up in the public comment, I just want to make a couple of public comments for, and, and Tim jump in anytime because this is town office related. Um, concrete was poured on the major portion of the building today. Um, the, the modular portion of the building, the, the concrete walls were poured. Um...
And yesterday was the schoolhouse, correct?
That's right. Yesterday, they poured the, the footings for the schoolhouse portion of the building. Um, so the next stage for that is walls. Um, for the schoolhouse portion, which still leads us to the, the schoolhouse will not be moved unless things really change until the spring, and that's totally 100% labor-driven by the mover. But when I met with, um, when our team, our management team met with our engineer on the project from, from Gunsmoke and, um, our concrete guy, the foreman from our concrete crew, when the management team met with them three, four weeks ago, I don't, I, I don't know the exact date. It's all a blur. The pros of doing the schoolhouse portion now far outweighed the cons, so that's why we made the decision to pour the schoolhouse portion now. Which, which doesn't mean that we're going to move it now, but that means that it's poured. And we have to do some things for winter, but that's okay. We, we know what we have to do. Um, so once again, it was the management team that made the decision. We, we talked about it. And, um, that was the decision that was made pretty much on the hood of a pickup, looking at plans. Um, but that's how things happen. Um, some of the concerns about moving it were about pouring now, were, um, how far the building was out of square. That was one of the holdups initially. The engineering firm came up. They shot, they shot site grades. They did what they needed to do on the building itself. And, which doesn't surprise me, one drop, but that building is one half an inch out of square. It's one half inch. So which doesn't surprise me, like I said, because of craftsmanship years ago.
Old builders, yep.
Well, so that's just kind of the town hall update right now. There's not a lot of other stuff to update on, on that part of it, but we are definitely gaining, that's for sure. Concrete, concrete's up a week from now when they strip the forms. Concrete, concrete's up, a week from now, when they strip the forms, you'll see concrete walls.
And the building is still coming at the end of the...
This week, right?
Eat.
A weekend?
We haven't heard...
And they haven't gotten back?
They haven't gotten back to us yet, Tim and I have been in contact with preferred builders. Um, they have not confirmed that with us as of right now, so I don't want to say that it's coming until we have, that's right, we, we've been in contact, we just haven't heard back from them.
Okay.
That was the initial tentative date.
That was a tentative date, but I, I would bet that it's probably not, because we haven't heard back that it was coming tomorrow.
Well, that, no, that and the weather.
Yeah.
It's been an awful lot of rain.
So that's where we're at. But that's our update on the town hall, sorry, I di- I just wanted to throw that in under public comment.
Are you all set?
Yep, that's it.
Alright, thank you. Megan, can you open up to regular public, please? Anybody out there, please raise your hand, and remember to state your full name.
No one's raising their hand.
Okay. Then we need a motion to go into executive session for legal and contractual.
I move that we go into exec- executive session.
Do you think we'll be taking any kind of action? We don't know, okay.
Oh, there's a possibility.
There's a possibility, right?
There's a possibility that action could be taken.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So can I entertain a motion to go into executive session, please?
I moved that already.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
With possible action.
That's right. All in favor? Aye. Back into regular session? Mike?
Uh, action taken, there's going to be action taken from, from our executive session. Um, I move that we authorize our attorney, Bob Fisher, to hire a consultant for a fee not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Back to that.
Okay. Any discussion? Jamie?
Aye.
Bob? Bob? Ronnie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Angie, aye. So I see nothing else before the board, can I entertain the motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Can I have a second? All those in favor? Oh.
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Angie, aye, thank you, everybody, have a good night.